Mr. Clerk, would you call a row, please?
Not ready to get. All right. Mayor Pro Tem and District 5 Alderwoman, Dr. Estella Edward Shabazz.
Present.
Chairman and District 4 Alderman, Nick Palumbo.
Present.
Vice Chair and District 3 Alderwoman, Linda Wild O'Brien.
We stay ready. Let's go.
Post 1 Alderwoman, Carolyn H. Bell.
Present.
Post 2 Alderwoman, Alicia Miller Blakely. District 1 Alderwoman, Bernetta B. Lanier. District 2 Alderman, Dietrich Leggett.
Yes, sir.
And District 6 Alderman, Curtis Purty.
Present.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, you have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Good morning, everyone, and good morning to all who are listening to us on our social media platforms. Today is June 12th, 2025. It is, the time now is 11:03, and we are getting ready to start our City Council Workshop for today. We're going to ask Alderman Purty to please open us up and pray.
Thank you, if you would. Bow your heads and go to prayer with me, please. Gracious and loving God, we gather here today as humble stewards of this great city of Savannah, entrusted with the care of our neighbors and the well-being of every soul who calls Savannah their home. Grant us wisdom that is grounded in compassion, courage that is guided by integrity, and vision that sees the needs of the many and not just the few. May we always be reminded that to serve is to love and to lead is to listen. Teach us to honor the dignity of every person, to seek unity where there is division, and to be instruments of peace and justice in everything that we do. Let our decisions today be rooted not in self-interest but in the deep and abiding call to love our neighbor as ourselves. Let this meeting, this workshop, our work, and our city, in the name of God the Creator, Christ the Redeemer, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Alderman Purty. Our mayor, Van Johnson, he had an appointment this morning, and he will be here shortly. But he knew that he was in good hands with his meeting on today, so we are getting ready to do this. Good morning, City Manager. With our workshop agenda, let us please start with number one, the 2024 year-end financial closeout.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and good morning, Council. It's great to be with you this morning. Got a really fun workshop today. We're going to start with our FY 2024 closeout, which is an annual workshop where we hear from our third-party auditors about our annual comprehensive financial audit. And so I think you all should have and received a copy of the audit for 2024. And without further ado, I will introduce our Senior Director of Financial Services, David Maxwell, as well as our auditing partners at Malden &amp; Jenkins to run through today's presentations, and then we'll be very eager to answer any questions you have about the financial audit. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager, and good morning to everybody. We do have Trey Scott here with us today with the audit firm of Malden &amp; Jenkins, and they have offered an opinion on the city's financial statements. And one thing I would point out is that these are the city's financial statements. The staff in the Accounting Services Department, the Revenue Department, the Budget Department, and staff all across the city make this happen. And this is not only a financial statement, but it also has a lot of operating and statistical information in it as well. So if you're interested in what we spend on each individual SPOLOs project, there's schedules in here that show you. If you're interested in what the pension plan returned as far as return on the trust fund investments for the last 10 years, that's in here as well. So every dollar that the city takes in or every dollar that the city expends is accounted for and opined upon in this document. So if you look in here, there's about 200 pages worth of information, and only three of those are from the auditors. And that's their opinion on whether or not the statements are presented in accurate way, that they're free of any material misstatement. So certainly, we want to thank all of the efforts of the City Manager and the staff that helped put this together. And if you have any questions about anything in here, certainly contact him, and he can get your questions to the right person. This time, I'll introduce Trey Scott. He's the partner in charge of this engagement with Malden &amp; Jenkins. He's going to talk more about their firm and some of the results from this year's audit.
Well, thanks, David. I thought I had a PowerPoint presentation, perhaps?
Should be uploaded.
Sorry. Technology. Thank you, David. Oh, there we go.
Well, we can see it up here.
Okay. Thank you. Well, again, my name's Trey Scott. Apologize for the delay there and appreciate that introduction, David. Mayor Pro Tem, Council, certainly happy to be here with you all to discuss the results of the city's 2024 audit. Really quickly, why I'm here, give you a quick introduction to Malden &amp; Jenkins. I think you all are familiar with us at this point, but just in case you're not, go over our audit opinion, some highlights of your financial statements, because that ACFER is a pretty large document, so I pulled out some highlights for you, a few audit communications, and some other matters as well. Really quickly about Malden &amp; Jenkins, we were founded over 100 years ago. We serve over 725 governmental entities throughout the Southeast, do that across 14 offices in six states, and the office that serves you all is our Savannah, Georgia office. But enough about us. I think of particular importance to you all is our opinion on your financial statements. I think, as David mentioned, the financial statements themselves are the responsibility of the city's management. It's our responsibility as your auditor to express opinions on that financial information based on our audit, and we do that by following generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. And I'm pleased to report to you all today that we were able to issue the city a clean, or what we call an unmodified opinion. And as David mentioned, what that means is that your financial statements, that ACFER, presents fairly the financial position and the results of the city's operations as of 12/31/24. And that's what you're looking for, a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that we can provide to you as your auditor. Also, something that's not included in your ACFER, it's a separate compliance report. Anytime you spend more than $750,000 in federal grant monies, you're required to have a single audit of your major grant programs. You all spent about $13.9 million in grant money, federal grant monies this year, and we audited three major programs, and you complied in all material respects there as well. So a clean opinion on compliance with those grant requirements for those major programs. So all good news to report to you. Additionally, we had no audit findings this year. I think that's a testament to the hard work of the Finance Department and management, and certainly something I think you all should be very proud of as well. You know, I think you know you all present an ACFER, but an ACFER goes above and beyond the minimum level of required reporting for a local government. You present some additional sections within that ACFER that not every government presents, and it's submitted every year in the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program. And you all are one of the few governments that I know that has received that certificate since its inception in 1984. So we're looking at 41 years. This year will be 40, or I guess 42, 40 years, 39 years. It's all math, 41, I guess. But that's a, that's pretty impressive achievement as well, and again, something I think you all should be pretty proud of. Moving on to just kind of take a look at the numbers themselves, and again, these are pretty high-level highlights. I think I've mentioned to you all before, but like most local governments, you all present two sets of financial statements. The first is your government-wide set of financial statements. It's the big-picture view of the city at December 31, 2024. It's all of your funds kind of rolled up into one column, again, just giving you that kind of overall outlook or view of the finances of the city at that date. And you can see your balance sheet there, about $2.8 billion in assets. A lot of that is capital in nature, offset by $0.6 billion in liabilities, giving you a net position of about $2.2 billion. Now, that's not the cash you have available to you, just the difference between your assets and your liabilities. Then you can also see how you performed as far as profit and loss goes, or your income statement, or statement of activities that we call it in the governmental world. You increased your bottom line up from about $2 billion last year up to about $2.2 billion this year. That's what that $187 million change is. You can see also the increase in revenues, again, across all of your funds, also the increase in expenses as well. One of the more common questions I get, and I apologize for my voice, is how healthy are we as a city? And an audit's not designed to tell you how healthy you are, but there are certain metrics that you can kind of look at to gauge health. One of the ones that I like to look at at the government-wide level is, are we reinvesting in the city? Are we allowing our assets to age? And this graph really does show you that over the course of, at least the last six years of the data that's here, you can see a significant growth in your depreciable assets and sizable growth in your accumulated depreciation. But what we don't want to see is that orange bar being close to the height of the blue bar, because that would mean that you have a very aged capital asset base, and it would appear that you're not really reinvesting in the city. And that's not the case. That's not what we see here. So that's certainly a very healthy-looking capital asset activity over the course of the last six years. Remember I said you had two sets of financial statements, right? We just talked about government-wide. Now we're going to talk about a couple of your specific funds or your fund-level financial statements, more specifically the general fund. And you can see there what your fund balance was. It's right around a little bit higher this year than it was last year, it increased about $6.5 million. That's what that bottom bullet point is telling you. Our number of days of expenditures in fund balance didn't really change much from the prior year either. That's the third and fourth bullet there, about 96 days in the fund balance, and then about 89 days of expenditures in your unassigned portion of your fund balance. So no real change from the prior year there. And you can see, you know, what your total revenues and other financing sources were, and your total expenditures and other financing uses or transfers out were as well. So no real concerns as it relates to the general fund, but again, I like to look at it graphically as well, because it really kind of tells a better story than just looking at numbers on a page. But you can see from your low of revenues in 2020, which was our COVID year. It's pretty wild to think that that was five years ago, or over five years ago. But you can see that ratable increase over the course of those five years, and the same goes with your expenditures, too. So, and then unassigned fund balances continue to grow as well. So those are all really good trends as it relates to your general fund. The other significant fund that I pulled out is your Water and Sewer Fund. It's a business-type fund, so reported a little bit differently than your governmental funds, like your general fund. But you can see your net position or your bottom line there for the Water and Sewer Fund of about 600, almost $650 million there. Again, it's not the cash you have, right? Just the difference between your assets, your liabilities. A good portion of that is capital-related. You can see $541 million there. If we go all the way to the bottom, we did have a little bit of a decrease in cash when we look at your statement of cash flows. I don't really get all that concerned over that, because it does fluctuate from year to year. What I like to see is good, positive, strong operating cash flows. And you all generated about $41 million there that can be used to reinvest in the water system. So again, good-looking numbers as it relates to the Water and Sewer Fund as well. The final, I guess, kind of piece that I wanted to talk a little bit about is your pension and your other post-employment benefit plans, so the benefits that we provide to the retirees. Your pension plan, if we go all the way down there to the bottom, is about 72% funded. That's, that's probably average, a little above average, and really nothing to be concerned about. But the OPEB plan is 121% funded, and that's pretty incredible. Not too many OPEB plans are actually funded at 100%, certainly not more than 100%. So that's certainly a good takeaway there as well. And just to kind of look at this graphically as it relates to your funding of your plans, pension plan's kind of bounced around a little bit, maybe to a high of about 85, 90% in 2022, but you can kind of see what the OPEB plan has done, too. Again, not worried about that OPEB plan decreasing like that. I mean, anything above 100% is really pretty incredible as it relates to OPEB. So good, good funding of your plans, you know, certainly nothing really we need to keep an eye on there. Moving on from the numbers, just a few things that government auditing standards require me to communicate to you all. Included in those financial statements, you've got financial statement footnotes and judgments and accounting estimates, and all of those items are very integral parts of your financial statements and are the responsibility of management. Audit adjustments. We did not have any auditor-proposed adjustments to your financial statements. And to put that into perspective, the numbers that you make decisions on throughout the year are correct. I'm not having to come in as your auditor and correct a bunch of things at year-end and post a bunch of audit adjustments. So that ought to give you obviously some comfort in the numbers that you see. And then also want to make sure you all are aware that we are independent of the city in accordance with all of the applicable standards of our profession. I'm sure you want me to talk for 30 more minutes about the new Governmental Accounting Standards Board statements that are effective, are going to be effective over the next couple of years. No real huge impact on the city from these three. It seems as though the GAZBI has kind of taken a little bit of a break in issuing new standards. So that's nice, because they were really hitting us pretty hard, or have hit us pretty hard over the course of the last 10 years. There will be some slight changes from 103, but I'll tell you this. Of all of my clients, your finance department is proactive when it comes to implementation of new standards. Instead of me having to call the finance department and say, "How are you all handling the implementation of these standards?" The finance department calls me and says, "This is what our plan is. How do you feel about that? Are you okay with that? Do you agree with that?" And that's really the way it should work. But the overwhelming majority of governments don't operate that way. But I just wanted to make sure you all are aware that you have a very proactive finance department, one that cares a lot about doing the right thing, and that's very refreshing from my standpoint as your auditor. I wish all of my clients were like that. And then finally, just some value-added services we provide only to our clients. I know that the finance department takes part in our free quarterly continuing education and the newsletters that go out and those kinds of things, and we're happy to provide that, have been doing it since 2009. And so it's just a great way for us to be able to educate our clients and provide a free opportunity for continuing education. And other than that, that pretty much concludes what I had to report to you all today. It's always been a pleasure to serve the city, and we look forward to serving you all in the future.
Thank you so much, City Manager, Mr. Maxwell, and our consultant. We are elated again to have a report that states that we do have a clean opinion on our, our reporting for the end of 2024. City Council members, are there any questions?
Not a question.
Alderwoman Bell.
Not a question but a comment. I want to echo the sentiments of the auditor to David and your staff. Thank you, Attorney, for moving over so I could see him. Thank you for the job that you do, the fine job that you do, and for keeping us straight.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Alderwoman Wild O'Brien.
Thank you for your audit, and I appreciate your time and your coordination with this information. But my questions now are for the City Manager. Yeah, and so the EBITAs and all of that information, when I worked for a Fortune 500 company, the purpose of having this outside audit is to make sure that we are in compliance and budgeted with our ins, our outs, and that the money that we receive are in compliance with state laws. And so, Mr. Melger, you know, we understand that the three Ps of this audit is people, process, and products. And so we've got the process and products. And so I'm asking you, Mr. City Manager, what is your process of people audits in this company before it gets to HR? That's one question. And I wanted you to tell us who our, what is it we have? How many enterprise departments do we have who are actually making money? That's what is it?
Okay, so, right. We have.
Water service, utilities, I can't remember.
Sanitation.
Yes, sanitation.
Civic Center, which includes the arena.
And so all four of these, Mr. City Manager, they are departments who stay in the black, but they stay in the red when it comes to dealing with our citizens. These departments are making money, but their customer service is lacking, especially in that revenue department where our seniors continue to come in there frustrated and concerned, and everybody, including myself, is having a problem with the water. One of the enterprises, and so I'm asking you, and I'm asking this auditor, how do we find money that we can use that's already in the black so that we can eliminate? Because when we have people who are in the front of these departments, they are the people that our citizens see. And we get the most complaints from our enterprise departments. How do we fix that? What is your process of auditing people who are the frontline, sanitation, the revenue department, water, and the civic center? That's where our people, the people that we service, they want to know. And can you explain to me and to anybody who's interested how we fix the auditing of people? And how we, what do we do better? We got the finance part down. What do we do better so that our citizens are not complaining about departments who are in the black? Not the ones who are in the red, but the ones who are in the black, who should be handling frustration with dignity and respect? Can you answer those two questions for me, please, Mr. Manager?
Yes, ma'am. So to kind of walk through that is, one, we do have many business-type funds. She called enterprise funds, it's interchangeable. Not all of our enterprise and business-type funds support 100% of those business-type activities. For instance, a lot of our operations in sanitation are funded through the general fund because the, the fees and, and service charges associated with sanitation do not cover the full cost of the services we provide in sanitation. So I just want to be clear about that, that where Water and Sewer, the, the fees we collect in terms of the usage of Water and Sewer, those go to support 100% of that business type. But we do have business types that we also help to support fund through the general fund, because we offer wider services than we want to charge those who receive them to get them right. But to, I think to answer the spirit of the question about, okay, we've, we've got our accounting down. We're, we're very good about making sure that we're doing the right accounting for the money that we receive and the money that we put out. Your question is more about our operations. How do we ensure that we're having effective, efficient operations within our departments? And you're asking specifically about departments that receive business-type funds, so I'll stay there. But I think it's.
Wait a minute, sir. I'm asking questions for specific departments that deal with our citizens face to face. Those are the departments, and I'm saying the tie-in is not the departments who are working in the red. We're talking about customer service and how our people, Team Savannah, treat people who go in there and have questions about parking, about sanitation, about that good government that we talk about, getting their ditches clean, and having to deal with people who don't always be respectful to our citizens. That's the question that I ask, sir.
Thank you. And that's, I think you're talking about customer service, and you're talking about being professional and approaching people, especially when they're having to pay money for services. And, and we know that paying bills isn't fun ever, and sometimes it can be challenging for residents. And so we have to be able to provide that kind of empathy and customer support. I did share with Council that we do routine management audits, which manage people and manage processes where our financial audit, audits are numbers in our books. Currently, we have a management audit happening in our Revenue Department and in our Utility Billing Office as we continue to kind of expand those services and think differently about how we're providing customer service to make sure that our operations and our standards are matching what our customers are demanding of us. So that, that's happening right now, and as soon as that management audit is complete, I'll be able to provide those results for you. But we do provide management audits, just like we do for our financial audits, and we have a department that does that, our Office of Performance and Accountability. And, and so that's, we have an internal auditing function that goes out and provides those management audits. And we also contract with third parties as well. We're, we're working through the Georgia Municipal Association now to support our management audit of those two offices.
Mr. Melger, I know you are a man of integrity. I believe that, and I support you 100%, but I've not seen one of those reports from a people audit. And so could you get me one of those audits? And can I look through it and see if the apples and apples are the same way that we handle our financial audits? I'd like to see one, please, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
In the future. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Yes.
Alderman Palumbo.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you so much for the presentation. Always good to get a clean bill of health. I would like to see, you know, more auditing jokes to hold ourselves accountable and not treat this as a write-off. It's the best I could do. But there's always not much to say with a clean bill of health, and we're always happy to see it. But, you know, Malden &amp; Jenkins has been taking a look at our services for a couple of years. Just in your opinion, what's the areas that show the most improvement in controls? And how do we, how do we stack up compared to other cities our size?
Yeah, you know, if we found anything where we thought there were issues with your financial policies, controls, we would certainly report those to you, whether it was a finding or if it was something just as immaterial to be a management letter-type comment. So, I mean, as far as we're concerned and the things that we look at as it relates to your financial statement audit, I mean, your controls are operating the way they should be. As far as how do you stack up to other cities, that oftentimes is a little bit of a loaded question. I always say, you know, don't really compare yourself to others. Let's look at how we're improving internally. And that's why I showed a couple of those graphs to show how you all are trending, continue to trend, I guess, in the right direction as it relates to fund balance, reinvestment, capital asset-type activity.
Well, kudos to the team. Thank you.
Alderwoman Blakely. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, Mr. Scott, for your presentation. Mr. City Manager, you said that you are auditing management personnel for two departments, right?
It's called a management audit. It manages, it audits our processes, it audits our management practices and the controls we have over our operations, just like a financial audit audits the controls that we have over our financial bookkeeping.
You have two departments that you named, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Name those two again.
The Revenue Department and the Utility Billing are currently engaged in a management audit.
I don't know if you can, but I think you need to add Park and Tree and, and that department as well, and I'll talk to you about that when we set up a meeting. Mr. Scott.
Yes, ma'am.
You've been coming to us, I can remember. I think we met about six years ago.
Malden &amp; Jenkins, correct?
Yes.
The first, the first partner was Miller Edwards. He is, he retired about three years ago, and I've been your engagement partner for the last, this is the third year.
Okay. I find it interesting that every year we just do great things, and then our audit is, is perfect. You mean to tell me we don't do nothing that we need to question, fix? I'm just kind of baffled that we are just so great.
I believe early on, we did have a couple of findings, and we've had some findings in the past. But the last couple of years, no, ma'am, we have, we have not had any findings or recommendations.
Well, the last six years, we haven't had any findings, from what I can remember.
I'd have to go back and double-check, but I'm almost certain at least the first couple of years, we did.
Okay. All right. I'm just, I'm just concerned that every time you all come with this audit is always a great audit. And I mean, that's, that's good, but you know, there's... Okay, thank you. Anyone else? City Manager, Team Savannah, we want to thank you all so much for the hard work that you all do in reference to overseeing our finances and how we do business.
all do in reference to overseeing our finances and how we do business. So I just wanted to say kudos and continue doing the great work and coming back to us this time of the year, every year, and making sure that we have a clean opinion in reference to our audit. That's how we do good business for our, for our people. All right? Thank you all so much. Thank you, city manager.
Well, just if I could add on before we transition, Mayor Protem, I know in the past, at least in the years that I've been here, Mr. Scott, that questions have come up about, well, if there was anything that you would have suggested, and I think that, what could we potentially focus in to work on? And I think that answer over the last few years has been, you know, it's always good to invest in your reserves. And I know we didn't get the question from council today, but can you speak a little bit about what you see in terms of our reserves?
Sure. I mean, you know, we talked about fund balance in the general fund, and, you know, if you think about a government that... I'm almost there. That, you know, relies on property taxes as a major source of revenue. You all have a bunch of other revenue sources, unlike most governments. But what you would want to see is increases to that fund balance. It's been increasing, but we would like to see it continue to increase. You know, I think we had the question a couple of years ago about bond ratings, and how do you get that AAA bond rating? One of the big things they look at is your months of expenditures and fund balance, and you all are at right around three months. You would want to be, and that's a healthy place to be, but you all are also at 12, 1231 year-end. You've just collected the majority of your property taxes that you're going to collect for that cycle. So you would want to see a little bit higher fund balance in the general fund than what we see. Now, again, GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, they recommend you have somewhere between two and four months. So you're in that, in that range. But if you really want to see improvement, or you really want to see that increase in bond rating and those kinds of things, that's one of the places where you really need to kind of bump up, as the city manager said, your reserves.
If our mayor was here, he would, he would have asked that question about our...
Bond.
Bond rating.
Yeah.
Yes.
Alderman.
Waldembrand.
Mr. Maldon, you know, I have been addressing a concern for a moment, and I wanted to ask you, sir, what are your recommendations when it comes to this company that's in 2025 in our take on direct deposits? I'm talking about across the board, for employees, for contractors, anything that has to do with our money going out. What would be the problem in having direct deposit? Because we don't currently do that for every, every entity that we work with. And I'm just curious, after audit, why do you think that a company our size can do half-direct deposits? Because we're getting questions about people waiting for over 21 days, and that should be a part of your audit. Do you have anything in that, the audit, that says that? That if a person who goes through finance, if they have a check, and for whatever reason they don't get that check, they have to wait 14 days, have a stop payment, go back to finance, and then wait an additional seven days through the mail for a company that is hinging on probably the difference between staying afloat and going under? What is your recommendation for that?
I don't see any problem with what you're proposing. I mean, I can't obviously make management decisions.
No, you can't. I asked you a question and recommendations, but you make recommendations, and I was asking for yours.
Oh, and I'm saying I don't see any problem with what you're proposing.
All right. Thank you so much for that.
City manager, do you have anything to add to that?
Not to that question, but just for clarity, I think the question is, currently, we pay vendors via a paper check that's signed, and that's part of our command and control over our finances and has been. There are other practices which would see the vendor payments be made electronically, like we do for our payroll checks every week. I think, as Mr. Scott says, there's, there's no financial concern, there's no financial auditing or control concern with that. It does take some investment in some platforms and IT that we would need to be able to do that, and Councilwoman has, has talked to me at length about that before, and we're working on that process to see what's, what's available to us. But when we understand the concern, I just wanted to kind of, if that's a fair description of your concern, make that clear to the table.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We're going to move on.
Thank you. As we finish up our mid-year financial report, I want to preview for council, the next thing that we do after we hear about our audit is we move right into the millage rate discussion because the summer is when we set the millage rate for our property taxes. We have built a budget based on last year's millage rate, the current millage rate of 12.2%. And we set the millage rate every year following the Chatham County Board of Accessors when they provide the digest. So the, the Board of Accessors has provided that information for the 2025 Property Tax Digest for the City of Savannah, and the news is very good. Savannah, as we know, is growing. The taxable digest grew by 8.8% in 2025 compared to the prior year, and the average annual growth rate over the past five years has been 10.3%. We see that growth year over year. The, the net growth accounted for more than, so there's two kinds of growth you see in your digest. You see new growth, which is a percentage of growth calculated from new development or new property that's being assessed for the first time, and then you have reassessments, right? The value of your home or your property goes up. So what we want to see is a lot of that new investment because that grows the tax base. And certainly, we like to see people's property values going up, but, but that's also, you know, kind of drives to that conversation about paying more taxes for the same property. This year, in the 8.8% total growth, more than half of that was new growth, which is a really, really good sign. And, and, and less than half, 4% of the 8.4% were due to reassessments. Just to put that in perspective, last year, there was 10.9% total growth, but only 1.8% of that was from new growth. More than 9% of that nearly 11% growth last year was from reassessments, right? So this year, we see a lot of our, our increase in the digest is from new growth, which I think is a really, really good position and sets me up to make a recommendation to council that we accept the rollback rate this year for the millage rate. And that rate would be at 11.749 mils that we could, that we could roll back to, to cover this year's budget as opposed to the current 12.20 mils. And we are able to do this, and I think do this in a really prudent way because of that high mixture of new growth addition to our tax digest, which we, which we get to count in new growth and doesn't calculate in that rollback. So I'm going to send council a memo with this information and this recommendation, but I wanted to be able to, to say that to you today about, you know, as we're moving into those next millage rate discussions, that I think this year's tax digest puts us in a really, really good position to be able to consider accepting the rollback rate. And that's based on the mixture of new growth versus reassessment in our digest.
City manager.
What was the rollback rate?
Let me ask you something. With that being said, and, and I'm not going to comment too much because the mayor's not here, but is that a contributor to what segment, what item, what, what caused that new growth?
Well, I think that, that is a, a direct result of the city's policies as it relates to investment in infrastructure, as it relates to growth in new areas, to the development that we've seen through the TAD on the eastern wharf, to development we've seen in the western parts of our community, to regrowth and reinvestment in, in our more traditional urban core. And we see that through the policies that this city council has made. So, and that, you know, to point to the, the last one, the housing density bonus program, those types of policies which incentivize new growth will impact the new growth portion of the tax digest. The annexation that's on the council agenda today for 150 acres, that will add to the new growth potential for our tax digest. And property taxes and millage rate, you know, account for a, a really important portion of our revenue, but it's not the only portion of our revenue. But it is the most stable, right? So we get property taxes, we get sales taxes, we get hotel motel tax, sales tax, and then we collect fees and fines, and those are, and then we receive grants as well. And those kind of make up the big ingredients of our revenue. So the millage rate discussion is really just about setting the, you know, the parameters for one piece of that revenue that we receive, but a very important one.
We are looking forward to that. We're going to stay focused on, on the agenda. Thank you so much-
Madam Protem.
...city manager for that statement. And I don't want us to get bogged down into that discussion right now.
I have a question, please, Madam Protem.
Yes, ma'am.
Based on that statement. Because what I just heard sounds so rehearsed, because you're telling me that the growth in the digest, the new growth is based on this council's policies. And we know better than that, because the growth has occurred mostly in the first district. And that's why we had to change the boundaries and give up to 7,000 and some people. And we're crying for policy solutions in the first district, and so, so we got to be careful. I know we're getting close to campaign season and all of that, but we, we got to, we got to be real, and, and we have not, we have not been placing equitable policies in place, and not even good policies for the developers to give them incentives to build. So, so I'm hearing one thing, and we, we have a habit of saying one thing and doing another, and it's just so hardly difficult to sit through that when you deal with these people in these communities every day and recommend a plethora of policy solutions that will solve the cries of the people, and then we go sit here and say that, you know, this, this growth is based on the policies, just, just less... I just have to say my opinion based on what's happening in, in the first district where the growth actually occurred.
We will continue this.
Mayor Protem.
Excuse me, just one second.
Can I, can I say something?
We're going to get Alderman Pertie's statement, but our time is ticking down, and we have three more items on our workshop agenda. So Alderman Pertie is going to be the last person to talk about whatever you want to talk about. We move it on to item number two.
Mr. Manager, what was the rollback rate one more time?
The rollback rate would be calculated 11.749 mils.
11.749, okay. Which, which is really great. That's, that's really good news for your recommendation, if the council adopts that. I know on the south side, in the sixth district, we've had some exponential growth on my area, and it's, I think it's going to be nice to see that benefit of the rollback rate if we so choose to, to go with that, and I would urge my colleagues to do the same.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
City manager.
And the reason I'm, I'm bringing that up is because the, and we'll, I'll send the memo, and we'll hear your feedback. But the direction council wants to go in terms of setting the rollback rate versus setting a different rate that might be higher from the rollback impacts the public process that we have to go through. So we, we need to be able to, to set that forward. So if we move forward the process that rolls it back, then we, then we don't have the ability to set it higher than the rollback rate. So we just, we just need to be mindful of that, and that's why I'm getting this in front of council as soon as that I have the information and the ability to make a, a recommendation. And you'll receive a memo today.
Good news, sir.
Thank you.
Sploes eight update.
Another very fun topic. Can I get the clicker? Thank you. Okay. So, council, let me get through Mr. Scott's presentation here. We have talked several times about creating a sploes eight list for a potential referendum to voters this November on a new sploes. Several weeks ago, I sent council a few documents in follow-up to the feedback I had received from council following our last public workshop, as well as reflecting kind of the state of the current lost negotiations or collaborations that we have with Chatham County and our fellow municipalities in Chatham County. So you have these sheets, and they've been made available to you and to the public, and I've got these sheets here on slides that we can discuss. But really, I'm looking for councils' kind of concurrence today in workshop to allow me to finalize the collaboration and negotiation with Chatham County based on a specific list that then would be incorporated into an intergovernmental agreement that city council would, and every other jurisdiction in the county, would hear and consider in July by the latest in order to move forward with a sploes eight referendum. So to give you just kind of a, a broad overview of where we kind of stand and how the numbers work out, there, the, the largest consideration, I think, in setting the numbers is, well, how much money are you going to ask the voters to approve? We had a local economist and Georgia Southern University professor, Michael Toma, run some numbers for all the municipalities and for the county to determine what a prudent number would be. And we think that that number is $700 million. $700 million, you may recall, was the same number that the school board asked for in their e-Sploes referendum that passed earlier this year. So that's what we believe in the six years of collection that, that's, that a potential sploes eight would conservatively generate in collections. And so we base the numbers for everybody's projects on that list. The municipalities in the county, in their collaboration, have really circled into taking $200 million of that $700 million and putting them towards top priority projects, top priority projects that impact, have a county-wide impact. And for us, for the City of Savannah, currently on that Priority One Projects list is $40 million for the Highlands Boulevard and Benton Boulevard road improvement, as well as the Effingham Parkway South portions of Benton Boulevard that are in Port Wentworth. That's a total $87 million project. The share for the local governments is around $40 million, the bulk of that work being done within the City of Savannah. So that $40 million is a Priority One project. The Civic Center Legacy Plan and the Johnny Mercer Theater renovation also currently on the Priority One Projects list with $40 million. And there have been recent talks about, including because it's related to an interstate system, the I-16 flyover removal project, which is currently at $4 million. So think about those $80 to $84 million in Priority One. Those are the portions that are related to the City of Savannah work. So that takes care of the first $200 million. So, that takes care of the first $200 million of the total $700 million. $80 to $84 million would be city of Savannah projects. The other ones include, for instance, $40 million for the Juvenile Justice System redevelopment, their facility there, $20 million for Quaco Road in Poole and in West Chatham, some money for Tybee Beach Renourishment, and some other important projects for our smaller municipalities. So, after that $200 million, we are set to receive 40% of the next $500 million, which specifically for the city of Savannah, for our projects, local projects, and that totals $200 million. So, I sent council a revised list based on where we were and those most recent collaborations and negotiations with the county and our other municipalities, and have, one, removed those projects that are now on the Tier One list from our local projects list, so we're not counting against those. We already have those in another bucket. And then needed to find an additional $25 million or so to shave off of our local projects list so that we fit within the $200 million mark that we're trying to meet for the splostate total list. And I sent you that revised, what I'm calling the revised recommended list. What I didn't touch on that were any of the projects that are community-based, that are based in our community and have a real impact on the quality of life for our residents. I think you'll see that there's still, number one, investments in stormwater, number one, priority there, priority investments in transportation and multimodal transportation. There's a priority there for public safety, as well as community development and recreational needs. So, I hope everybody was able to kind of look over that revised recommended list, which is, again, is my attempt at creating a list that I think is, meets the needs, one of your priorities and two of the priorities of our community. We did receive additional council requests, and you have those in front of you as well. Again, you know, working with a total of around $280 million or so, $200 million specifically for our local list, council, council added another $238 million on top of the $260 million that were on that list. So, obviously, the list of considerations grew considerably, and we obviously are not going to be able to fund all of those projects within a $200 million local list mark. So, I want to make sure that you have everybody's additions in front of you. I mean, if there are things that are really important for you to work together as a council to be able to tell me to replace something on my revised recommended list with something on that was newly formed from the council in terms of their recommendations, but knowing that, you know, it's impossible for me to fit, you know, $330 million worth of new work into a list that I already had to shave down. So, I want you to take a list, look at both of those lists. You also receive the list of other capital needs that we also sent to council that didn't make the splosts eight cut for whatever reason, and they're still going to be on our unfunded list and that will work through other ways to be able to move those projects forward. But I think for today, specifically, I'm asking council in this workshop, as council has done in previous splosts, is to give me some concurrence on what list to move forward in my negotiations and collaborations with the county, so that when you get the IGA, it reflects the will of this council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
In reference, City Manager, in reference to the conversation I was telling you about that Alderman Blakely and I, we rode, most specifically in the fifth district, the south side of our district. And I was talking about some additional, and I see where some of my, some of our asks in the fifth district is not being funded, a little bit of them. But more specifically, on the south side, and also Alderman Blakely too, as I looked at this list, because we are so close on the end of our field trip and our looking at specific things that we need on that south side, we're so close to the six. And tying in the sidewalks that is so desperately needed between, especially between Tibet and Abricorn, where the sixth and the fifth run right into each other, we're going to talk about how we can, as the sixth, in the money for the sixth district, on some of that, especially for our, the sidewalks, because that is, the sidewalks and the traffic calming, I don't know if there is, I was looking through the list and sort of saw where the fifth district had NAs by several of these, our district asks. But I want to find out, because that's, the priorities of our work that we did together was sidewalks and traffic calming.
Exactly.
Yes, ma'am. So, and we appreciate the work that you did getting that list, and especially engaging your neighborhood presidents. We provided some comments on some of those issues, and we'll continue to work towards them to kind of get to a specific project. I think sometimes the projects, if we can't be specific about them right now, some of the reasons why you think they might be left off is because I think that they can be included in our larger bucket of projects that are already on our splosts eight list. So, we talk about sidewalk, new installation and sidewalk improvements. $12 million on that recommended revised did not touch that bucket at all. So, we want to keep $12 million in that. And council can decide at every year's budget, as we're expending those dollars, which specific projects that they want to see out of that splostate list. It's very hard to program $12 million worth of new installation or sidewalk repair when perhaps this is a six-year splosts, that we don't know all of the sidewalks that are going to need to be repaired in the future, and don't know necessarily all the opportunities that we have to build new sidewalks or have ready-made plans for those at the moment.
But just for the record right now, we need to, it has been a neglected area in between the Abricorns on, Abricorn End and Beginning on Middle Ground Road, Montgomery Cross Road. So, let's kind of, if we can, pin that up at the top of the priority.
Understood. And there also is another Vision Zero bucket as well, which would do road improvements, traffic calming measures, and other, and other infrastructure installations that we think are going to provide more safety in our roadways and trails.
I think it's important to point out the benefit, really, of these two administrations is that the city manager has had and maintained, our managers have maintained, a rolling list of concerns that you've lifted, results of town hall meetings, the results of visioning sessions, the results of parking lots. And he had the opportunity, from our strategic plan that is forthcoming, to be able to mirror those with our strategic plan initiatives with the additional requests that you all have put forward. I know that we have spoken extensively about it, and I know that he and team have labored to be able to find ways to pay for everything with less money, and obviously, it's just not possible. And so, what he has put before us is an opportunity to meet a lot of the things we've talked about. But keep in mind that splosts is not the only mechanism that we have to be able to fund stuff. We still have a general fund annually. We still have a capital improvement plan. There's often runoff or leftover from previous splosts that might be able to be reconfigured in. So, I think, because it's not included, doesn't mean it's a no. I think, you know, it is, let's find opportunities to take all of this off the table, and then the things that remain that we have to go ahead and get to them. I think back to the manager, because through our negotiations, we tried very hard to make sure that we anticipated that what we put up was stuff that we would be able to reasonably pay for, because we would be on the hook to pay for them regardless of we raised the money or not. Hence why, you know, if anything is proposed, to be removed, because what I want to leave today was with consensus for council, for the manager, to move forward with the MOA, or MEMO, and get that to the county so that we can move forward. But if there's any changes, then what we would need from you all is a corresponding change the council would agree on in the same amount so that this remains balanced. It has to remain balanced, so, just like a budget. So, just keep that in mind. I saw Alderman Purte, I saw Alderman Miller Blakely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, and I see that we have here, where is it, for four, five, and six capital improvement projects, 2.1 million for the Abricorn Medians from Victory Drive to Rio Road or Hero's Way, whatever you want to call, 8.2 miles, which is good. But also, don't forget, we also have the Abricorn Streetscape project from Splosts seven that was $3 million that is part of the CNU plan, the Congressman Urbanism, the South Side Legacy Plan. I think what's important to remember when we start looking at some of these projects, and I'm hopeful that when we start looking at these projects and we start divvying this pot of money out, that we get some projected timelines, because all too often what I'm seeing is, you know, we'll say, we're going to have this list here, we're going to, you know, we'll allocate 5 million to this, 6 million to that, and we just don't know when the project may or may not start, you know, sometimes. And we've gotten lists in the past where we'll say, okay, this is quarter one, or this is year through this year. But I think if we narrow it down, it kind of helps us a little bit to understand when these projects might start. The other food for thought, especially when we look at these median enhancement or the streetscapes projects, especially for the south side, this ties directly into not only the sixth district, but also the fifth district and the fourth. And we're talking about connectivity, right? We're talking about Vision Zero, streetscapes, not only enhance and beautify an area, but they also work to enhance public safety. They work to enhance pedestrian safety and promote Vision Zero, promote a walkable community. I know that along the Abricorn Corridor, there are several crosswalks where we've had pedestrians hit. We've had very unsafe areas where folks are crossing roads on Middle Ground. So, to me, you know, it's great that we're talking about beautifying or fixing an area, but you have to look at it for a holistic approach and look at it for what it is. I think that we have to have that plan in place. Once Splosts seven came out, we had that $3 million, there should have been a plan in place to say, this is what we're going to do with it. All too often, we get these projects put out there, and the public votes on them and says, yep, that's what we want, Abricorn, you know, Streetscape project. But what exactly is that, right? How do we incorporate that into public safety? How do we incorporate that into connectivity for our members that are going from St. Joe's Hospital to multifamily residential areas around the corner in my district or District Five? So, with that being said, I hope that we give that some consideration as we move forward with these projects.
Yes, sir.
Alderman, Miller Blakely.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Mr. City Manager, I see on the potential Splosts eight list where there's traffic and transportation, street paving, pavement rehab, 20 million, and sidewalk replacement and new installation. How are we going to determine who actually gets the street paving and the new sidewalks? How is that going to be determined based on what you're talking about here?
And those are not our only funds that help support those kind of things. We also get funding through GDOT as well, as proportion of our lane mile, so we'll marry those two things together, move forward. It's, I would like to be able to be in a position at every budget to be able to project for council in these different budgets, specifically the projects that we'll be able to complete geographically and spatially with some of these infrastructure projects. It's not been traditionally the way the city has handled that in the past. And of course, we're going to have to account for emergent issues. So, we're going to have to have some of these, this money there for emergency repairs and things of that sort. But council should be able to approve an annual budget that has a pretty clear list on any new sidewalk installations that are happening, what sections of road we hope to be able to repave that year with the money that's allocated for it, and any other infrastructure improvements that are spatial and that we can define in the budget. City council really needs to be able to see that. We're going to, we're going to present that based on the data we have on, especially with lane mile resurfacing, on what roads are in the most need of resurfacing. And so, that's how we're going to present it to council and make sure that you have the data to see that. That's how.
And that's scientific, right?
It is scientific, and it's based on, it's based on an industry standard and metric of, of set conditions for infrastructure. And so, we'll, that's how staff will produce its list to council in consideration for the budget.
When I look at some of these splosts eight projects, and as Alderman, I mean, Mayor Protem stated, the area that she's speaking about on the south side in the fifth district, it has truly been neglected. And I would like to hope and pray that we could put some resources into that area, because those are taxpaying citizens out there as well, that have not gotten some of the amenities that they pay for in their tax dollars that they should. Okay. Oh, another thing, too. I see where you're doing a south side retrofit and revitalization plan for the sixth district. Are we incorporating any of that, the fifth district on that side, into this plan as well?
Yes, absolutely.
Is that just strictly for?
It's part of the CNU plan. I think the, I think the reason it's classified as six is it's, the plan itself was focused a lot on the old mall location, which is sixth district. Of course, the plan itself is much more broader than that, and that area and that corridor as an anchor corridor for new growth and economic development and revitalization impacts both the sixth and the fifth district, and that's how that's going to be focused.
So, would you please annotate it like that, so when the public looks at it, they're not saying, this is strictly for the sixth district, this is the fifth and the sixth on the south side?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay? And so, I'm looking at the Windsor Largo Roundabout, and we talked about the medians. So, that is coming out of the capital, capital fund? The general fund for the Windsor Largo Roundabout? That's on the second page that states other capital needs?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I was making sure that wasn't, yes, it's already, we have a plan to pay for that.
We do?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I was mentioning to Alderman Purte in reference to Mohawk Park, and he said that there's some money left over from Splosts seven to do some.
I don't think we ever closed out the Splosts seven for Mohawk Park.
Have we?
I'll get that, I'll get that to you and understand the balance there.
Yeah, I would like to talk about that as well. Thank you.
What's the issue?
Oh, we'll talk about it. And I've already spoken to him about it as well, so we'll talk to you, City Manager.
To answer your question, there was some question about whether there was a Splosts seven project closeout, so City Manager's going to investigate, get back to him.
No, 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 that's not what she was asking. You wanted to know what the, this problem was out at Mohawk Park?
We were in our site visits, but she'll talk to you more about it.
Yeah.
We saw some things.
Really bad.
Okay.
All right, so Alderman Leggett, then Alderman Lanier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Melda, given consideration to SPOSS, can you speak to the projects that the hotel motel list may tie into or give relief to our budget?
Certainly. So the hotel motel tax dollars, we are still programming those projects that council approved when the hotel motel tax was raised from 6% to 8%. That is the River Street redevelopment, and I would urge everybody to look at the Community Improvement District's master plan that they produced through their own funds and gave to the city to do with what it will, and I think it's a really good plan that we're working through now. It also includes the Water Works Building redevelopment and corresponding infrastructure to access the trails and roads and sidewalks, the access to the Water Works Building. It includes money for Tie to Town as the top three projects. There's a wayfinding project also associated with it, $2.5 million for a museum, which council already allocated towards the Pearlie Smith School Museum in this year's budget. There is a West Bay Street kind of gateway enhancement that's allocated at $1 million. And I'm not sure-
It's in wayfinding, I think.
I said wayfinding. And if I'm missing it, I'll go back, but it's all included in the FY25 budget. And so those are the projects that we are, that we're using currently to program the hotel motel tax dollars. I think the good news there is that, you know, all of those projects are really important projects for the city, and we don't have to use SPOSS dollars or other capital funds in order to pay for them, right? So we're able to kind of make those investments, not have to ask our taxpayers, our local taxpayers, to include that in the SPOSS list.
Well, great. I think that's why I wanted you to clarify that because some people were asking why certain projects wasn't on our expectation list, but you answered that. But especially the second district, we wanted to make sure that the bulk of our conversations about our budget was going to go into traffic calming and drainage because we see a lot of issues with drainage throughout the second district, especially in the midtown area, and a lot of our concentration would definitely be on both of those issues.
I think important in this, in this proposed SPOSS list, $5 million for 60-inch trunk line along 36th Street, which we think is going to improve drainage in that area dramatically.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Alderman Leggett, to the City Manager's point and to council, I think thanking you for your wisdom and foresight, particularly on our five-year battle to pursue hotel motel tax. Otherwise, some of these things would have been items that would have been on the SPOSS list.
Right.
But because of that, this has allowed us, and again, the hotel motel tax is money that citizens are not paying unless you hanging out in hotels. But most people don't, and so those are things that are taken off of taxpayers' backs, and we're able to add more projects and get better bang for our dollar through the SPOSS project. So thank you for lifting that, Alderman.
Thank you.
Alderman Lanier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Melda, if we look at this potential list, mine is pretty lengthy, but most of that is infrastructure work, and we've had a lot of discussion about all of these. Right now, I just have a question about Styles, Lathrop, I mean, I'm sorry, Louisville, and for you to clarify what you were saying about the I-16 flyover.
The I-16 flyover over Martin Luther King Drive, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
So that was a project, I know that that's been in the works for some time. We've been able to budget out an estimate for the removal of that flyover at $4 million. And there's also an agenda item on today's council meeting, an agreement with GDOT, which provides the grant money we've received for the partial engineering of that removal over to GDOT, who would be effectuating that project because it is a GDOT asset. Because it's an interstate project, we're, and because we've seen such large support from it, from the community, and I think there were some letters of support sent for today's item as well, that I hope you were all able to see. We think it should be included in that Priority One list, but we haven't finalized that with the county.
Why is that?
Why is?
Should it be Priority One when some of the other infrastructure items are left out?
Well, because it's a, it's a, it's a, the Priority One list would be those that have a countywide impact, and because it's an interstate system impact, it kind of qualifies for a countywide impact versus a local list, which would be more localized infrastructure. Because it's an interstate project, we think that, you know, it, we can, we can hopefully move that to a Priority One list, which frees up more room in our local list to do our local infrastructure projects, which we've included.
And when you say Priority One, is, I was looking at your list here, and you removed the 4 million, and what does that mean? That money is coming from where?
So if you look at the list that's in front of you, there's, as I explained, there's so currently, right now, what the county and the municipalities are thinking about is a $700 million total SPOSS 8 list. 200 million of that will be comprised of what we're terming priority projects, which basically just mean the projects that have countywide import. And let me give some examples of those. That would be, the county has a $40 million project for the Juvenile Justice Center redevelopment. They've got some work to do in expanding the Juvenile Justice Center. $25 million as a local match to the President Street Railroad overpass here on President Street. $8 million for Tybee Beach Renourishment, where they bring in additional sand, they have to do that periodically. And of course, Tybee Island is a big generator of sales tax, and that beach is a big generator of sale tax, so making sure that we're, that's a countywide, that's our county beach, so investing there. $20 million in Quaco Road Enhancement, which is a major connector between large parts of Pooler and other western communities, including City of Savannah out on the western spaces. There are some important projects for some of our smaller municipalities, like lift station and sewer projects, that, while, I think, you know, for the City of Savannah, we can cover those costs in our other programs for smaller municipalities like Thunderbolt or Bloomingdale. It's very hard for them to meet a $5 or $6 million list station cost without the help of SPOSS, and so we're including those as well because those have some importance in terms of relative to the size of those communities. So that's those priority projects, and there's roughly, I think Airways Avenue is also on that list, which is also in the City of Savannah, benefits City of Savannah. So that list currently sits at about $200 million. And therefore, for projects of countywide importance, if they have any involvement with GDOT infrastructure, it's usually there as well. So that's the first $200 million, or $200 million of the total, 700. The $500 million that remains, the City of Savannah currently stands to get 40% of that $500 million, which is $200 million. And that's where you see the, our local list add up to $200 million. That's the number that we're trying to hit. But altogether, City of Savannah projects with our local list, plus those projects in the countywide list that are located in the City of Savannah or benefit the City of Savannah directly, are going to be somewhere between, you know, 80 and 100 million. So that's how I would think about in terms of what's the benefit specifically to the City of Savannah.
So that next phase of, I guess what I'm trying to get at, in looking at that whole area, of course, we went from needing to remove that because it divided neighborhoods in the past during urban renewal. We started there, and now we're seeing it's a countywide impact and importance, but not necessarily to the area where it sit in the first district. So when we're looking at where it sits in the first district, what's more impactful is that Styles Avenue completion and the Louisville Road and that culvert coming out of Woodville that's backing up all that water around those railroad tracks. And it's on the request list, but the most important thing here, first district wise, is that work in the Highlands, that's fantastic, that's great, just make it worth it, just to get the funds for that. But in, after that, do we have a plan for the-
We do, and some of the projects that you listed, you know, that were, that were included in the overall projects list, some of those projects overall already have funding availability or funding streams that are covering that project. So for instance, the Tremont Road culvert, I mean, that's a project that is on your list, it's underway now, right? So that project is ongoing. These are also for the Louisville Road culverts, and we did some work there just a few weeks ago following our community walk, that's included in that project as well. These also have an opportunity to be funded via the, a potential stormwater user fee as well, as well as the money that we put towards stormwater projects every year in the, in the general budget. So it's not that they are less important, it's just in some aspects, they have other availabilities to get done. The other thing that I would remind you of is, look to the $20 million, the first entry on the potential SPOSS 8 project list. Springfield Canal Basin Drainage Improvements, including brick grant replacement or Fell Street Pump Station upgrades, $20 million. Now, we're also working very diligently to replace that entire brick grant that we lost through other grant funding, right? And so all of this, all of that $20 million is kind of part of that Springfield Basin Drainage Improvement work. So as far as we can extend it out, which includes the Louisville Road, includes the projects that you, Tremont, it includes all those projects, as far as we can extend out that money, that projects, we absolutely will do that. So we're continuing to try to add fund balance to the stormwater basin improvement projects so that we can hit the next things on the list always.
Okay, well, the last comment on this, and my thinking is that if we have $4 million to spend in this area, the priority would not be taking down the overpass, especially as we build one triple that size just around the corner on Louisville. I'm just looking at, not that, I don't see the value in that coming down, but as far as priorities, it just doesn't rank for the people that live in the area, rank as high as completing that Styles Avenue and fixing that Louisville Road and those issues in there. And so right now, we don't have a clear funding mechanism for the Styles in Louisville and that work in there. Is that, is that where we are with that? But we're going to do this-
Well, I totally hear your comment about how you would prioritize those projects. I understand that. I think the answer I would give is the same, is that those stormwater projects are obviously priorities for ours, or it wouldn't be on the list, and we have, SPOSS is in our only way to pay for those projects, and they, they also sit at a, at an amount that, you know, sometimes it's, it's much easier to find $500,000 in available to do a project than $4 million for a larger infrastructure project that you might need to have from a SPOSS. So just, you know, like, and I know everybody on council understands that, so some of the, you know, some of the thinking there, too, is we're going to have a, we're going to have a greater availability to be able to tackle some of these smaller infrastructure projects that have a smaller amount in the course of our annual budgeting, in the course of our annual general fund contributions to the capital plan, or for any other stormwater capital funds that we might approve or have new revenues for. So I think it's a matter of not only what projects are most important, because that's obviously the first cut you want to make, but you also want to think through, what opportunities do you have to pay for other priorities using different funds and availability? So I think some of that comes into play as well. It's, there's a, you know, I think we've got to be very intentional and strategic about that, which is kind of how I approached my revised list.
And I promised this the last comment, but like River Street was able to utilize a tool that's, is going to be very impactful, like the CID. Then we got the TAD down at Eastern Wall, and I want to interject here that as we move forward, there was a recommendation that came from MPC that I haven't had the chance yet to do the research on about another tool that might be available for these type areas with this changing going on. So let's, let's also consider going forward, we getting what we need on River Street, we're getting what we need by the Civic Center, all of these other tools, let's look at using some more economic development tools for this area also.
Yes, I think you're referring to tax allocation districts or TIFs, tax increment financing, I believe. I think those are really great tools. The power in those tools is being able to align all of the taxing authorities together on the total impact of the taxes, right? So what you want to do with the tax allocation district or with tax increment financing is, together with the school board and the county, which would be, and with us, which would be the three taxing authorities for anything in the City of Savannah, is you want all of the taxes that would be paid for those properties to be able to go to the infrastructure investment, because remember, we're only essentially 25 or 26 cents of every dollar collected in, in property taxes when you add in the school board and when you add in the county.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman, Alderman-
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. City Manager, you said something to Alderman Lanier about the flyover being a part of the county because it's with DOT. I can remember when this situation first started, because I went to many of the meetings when they wanted to reclaim Old West Broad Street, and they wanted that property over there where the flyover goes, and they did a video that showed what, once that flyover came down, what that area was going to look like. So, and this was a group of women that decided, let's take the flyover down, and then we'll go ahead and redevelop that area over there. When did that become something that the county became involved in? Because before, during those meetings, the county didn't have anything to do with it.
It's not a county project. It's a, it's not, when I say of countywide importance, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's a Chatham County as the jurisdiction, the county commission, but that it's part of a road network that serves the entire county and the entire region, right? Just like we would consider, just like we consider Highlands Boulevard and Bitten Boulevard as road projects of countywide importance, those roads are in the City of Savannah, and, but they are, they're very important connectors in terms of how traffic flows throughout the county. And doubly so when you're talking about an interstate system, which is managed by the Georgia Department of Transportation. So I would disconnect the history you have with the report, which I've seen, was before my time, the Old West Broad Street report, and the SPOSS project specifically saying, okay, what, what tier do we want it to show up in or show up at all? And so my argument is, if we want that project to show up on our SPOSS list, I think it could qualify- qualify as a project of countywide importance. So why don't we include it in that first $200 million? And it would free up $4 million of our $200 million local list to get to other local priorities as well, right? So I think that's the, that's kind of my argument for getting more money for the City of Savannah to do its projects, kind of as simple as that.
Interesting. Okay, I'm not finished. Hold on, let me, because I don't want to, hold one second. The second district, and I don't know if Alderman-Leggett has mentioned this, but I don't see anything in here, maybe I'm overlooking it, or it's in something else. Gwinnett Street and East Broad underneath the, what is that, the Vi Duck?
Train trestle.
What is that, the train trestle? Correct. Is there anything in this amount of money, or either on our capital, in our capital funds, that's going to repair that area where the water seeps through, even when it's not raining?
We're working on that project right now.
You're working on it now?
Yeah.
Okay, good. I mean, I'm riding through there constantly, and I don't see anything being done, that's why I'm asking. And people ask me, so that's why I'm asking you.
Well, I drive by that, we had it blocked off for several, I don't know if it's still blocked off, but.
It's not.
It's not, but we, we, we were working on that project, there were some utility things that we found, that was contributing to.
The leaking.
The water. And so that was something that we went in to, to handle as well.
Okay, thank you. Now, you can go ahead.
Oh, no, I was gonna make a comment about.
Alderman-Bell.
I'm sorry.
No, I mean, go ahead.
It's okay. I was going to comment on what the city manager was explaining to you. I think as far as I-16 flyover is concerned, you were looking at the history of the project, which is fine, but I think from his perspective, you want it to be in tier one or priority one, because it's funded from the top.
Right.
Then, I mean, it's not.
Well, no, 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 I don't want it to be.
Well, I want it to be there.
You might want it to be, but I don't want it to be gone at all because of the history of it and the inception of it.
Oh, well, that's a different story.
So that's, that's what I'm talking about. I know the history.
Yeah, I knew you were speaking to history, but I didn't realize you were opposed to the project.
I am definitely opposed to it, yes.
Strategically, for us, when we're making a case.
Because I know what the outcome is gonna be.
When we're making a case for the ability to claim something as a countywide project, part of the analogy I used in some discussions with the county is, imagine the I-16 flyover being closed for any significant part of time. Because of how it's situated, everyone is affected by that. We can't say that for many roadways. And so to Alderman-Bell's point, it's no skin off our backs, so to speak. If it is a tier one project, it's not taking away from the funds that we would have here. Obviously, we'd be of more concern if it was a city project and it was taking away, that would be four less million dollars that we could use for our local projects, so.
Yes, Mayor.
This is like.
Well, your mic there.
I just got a couple of questions about this potential SPOS list.
Yes, ma'am.
I've done some kind of rough calculations, and I'm just really proud of the $20,000 that's finally going to be put in the Skidaway project, you know?
Twenty million.
Twenty million, excuse me, yeah, I want to make that clear, I apologize, the 20 million. I've been sitting in this chair for a long time, and we're still in the red. I sat here for the first four years, and most of the money, like all of us, went to the first district. And so I'm just asking, you know, I'm trying to explain to people in the third district why Victory Drive is so beautiful, and then we turn the corner, and there are no sidewalks, the grass needs to be cut, it's a commercial district, and this is an opportunity to let the people in the third district know that we've been asking for this, and finally, we're gonna get some end results, that's gonna make as close as we can get Victory Drive and Skidaway to have some equity. And so it's been a long time, we're still in the third district needing things. So my question now, that if we pass this SPOS money, and we can go ahead with this potential SPOS list, will it free up some additional dollars in our capital budget to do some other things? Because on the south side of my district, you know, initially, when I came here, they were, tried to convince me that WW Law was in the third district, it isn't. And so we got the park, and I'm just so glad of the, the meeting that we had last night about getting a full-size gym in the third district that's going to be attached to the park. And that end date, Ms. Christie, and they were telling us that it's a project that should come to fruition and completion by '27. I'm just interested in, again, to be clear, if there's going to be some additional monies to do some other things, if this money's available, and can we move on this list to make sure that, you know, I did the rough calculations, the money is kind of equitable, there's like, let me see what I wrote that at. The bulk of the money is going to the second and the fourth district. I'm sure they're needing something too, but we still short of about almost $475 million that went to the first district. We want, when we talk about equity, and when some money comes along, we want to make sure that the other districts have some things that they've been concerned for some years too. And I'm just proud to say that Skidaway is thriving, we want to make sure that the business owners in that district know that we're doing the best that we can do, and at this time, this, this is going to be something really great for them in that district. I appreciate that, and thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, you have something?
Just, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick recap, after consensus here, what are, what are the next steps as, as we have a, you know, the timeframe that's ahead and way ahead of, all right, hey, all right, we made it happen. We manifested that.
You did, that was all AI just responding to. Thank you. Great question. I think there's, there's a lot to go, if, if council kind of, if council gives me that clear direction today, I think that we can, you know, wrap things up with the county and our other municipalities. I think there's just a, you know, a few things that we're kind of tweaking and making sure everything aligns, but of course, this is a dance that all eight municipalities in the county, those city councils and the commissions, they all have to kind of do together, and so trying to steer all that in the right direction. But we will have to adopt an IGA by July 16th. So our date for that is July 10th, would be our set council meeting date. I heard from the county this morning, they think they're gonna have us a draft IGA, hopefully by tomorrow, that weekend, and the city attorney and I and the team can start to review. But, so we'll have to have those adopted by July. July 18th is the last day that Chatham County Board of Commissioners can call an election for SPOS for November. And then July 25th, there'd be a public notice if that call was made. October 4th would be the deadline for the county to put those notifications in the public papers, and then, of course, November 4th is election day. So there's going to be some work between today and July 10th with the county and the other municipalities, just to make sure that we're, you know, all kind of on the same page as the IGA, because we'll all be adopting the same IGA.
Let me just, let me add to that, and this is to, and thank you for lifting Alderman-Palumbo. So again, is, this, this is a ballet and a symphony kind of at the same time. My only insistence, obviously, was I want to make sure, and the city managers communicate this to the county, that we are all very transparent about what this is about. People need to know what it is they're voting for. And as we've put forth the list, we want the county to put forth the list, and we're just seeking consensus for the city manager to finish this negotiation process to get us to the IGA point. I know that there's still several meetings to get us to where we need to be. I will tell you, this is not perfect. This is not perfect. But this does a lot to get us closer to where it is we need to be. If we had all the money we wish we would have had, we could get everybody everything that they wanted. If y'all look on there, some of the things, I know none of that stuff got in, but I do understand that for the strategic plan and for the road we are going down, I was glad to see some of the things that were on, really on those parking lots and things that were mentioned in our vision session. I saw a lot of those citywide in those districts actually getting on. I think that is a, a good thing. And again, SPOS is not a one-on-one-off. It does flesh with the things that we've heard about in the strategic plan sessions, drainage, traffic calming, those things are in there, and I think this, again, supercharges our efforts. Now, the folks just got to vote for it, and hopefully, all of you will be supportive of this, this year and this time of these funds, to make sure that our folks get the projects that they need.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. City Manager.
I see on here where we have parks and recreation, only $4 million, and this is for park and playground improvements. Is that possible, that we could look at adding more to that?
So for our parks, we have way more than, so we've got five, 10, 14.8.
I'm just looking at the section that says citywide.
17, there's 17.1 million in parks and recreation on this list that I can count up. For the citywide, give me the number again.
That's on the second page.
Oh, if it's on the second page, then you're not, you're looking at this SPOS eight potential list.
No, I'm looking at the second page where it says $4 million.
So that's $4 million, that's.
Under capital needs.
Yeah, capital needs.
Right. So I'm asking, could we look at adding more funds to that if possible?
We can, and this is.
Thank you.
This is not, this isn't part of the SPOS list, this is our other capital needs list.
I'm aware.
And we, and I think that we do, and I appreciate council's leadership on this, we're able to put in a lot of our general fund capital improvement into our recreation as well. So I think we'll continue that as long as that's a priority for council.
Thank you very much.
All right, well, Mr. Manager, I think, given what I'm hearing, move, go ahead, go forth. Let's get this thing done. And I think, given the nuances of the election cycles, we needed to get this done this year.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, sir?
No, thank you.
Y'all hungry?
Mm-hmm.
All right, well, let's go ahead, we'll, we'll stay on the recess, and we'll be back at 2 o'clock. Thank you all so much.
All right.
And thank you, Mayor Potem, for serving.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Manager, Mr. Attorney, I just need to holler at you for one brief second.
Fuzzier. Peepers, cheaters. Get some cheaters. It happened, it happened last week. We were doing a puzzle.